Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM on Wednesday, April 3rd. I called the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry and on her right Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucenti and on his left Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, the town manager, Kelly Axtell, deputy town manager, and also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbach, the Select Board Executive Clerk. Tonight's meeting is a regular session of the board and we will be taking general public comment. Before we start the comments section of our meeting, I would like to remind all participants that we are neighbors and are working together in the best interests of our community. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes and each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by telephone should press star nine to be recognized or click on the raise hand button in the Zoom application. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant board or committee affiliation. Tonight I will be using the Zoom timer feature to display the remaining time for a speaker. When this two-minute countdown timer reaches zero, I will interrupt and only allow the speaker to finish their sentence. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment about an item that is not covered elsewhere on tonight's agenda? If you're in the room, please stand at the mic. Online, please raise your hand or use star nine. Seeing no, seeing none, we will move on to select board announcements and liaison reports. Colleagues, tonight we have no written comments in our packet. If there are any verbal comments, I'd like to defer them to the end of the meeting, but let me know if you have them. There are a few, we'll catch them at the end. Mr. Malloy, do you have a town manager's report this evening?
I do not have one this evening.
Thank you. We have three items on the evening's consent agenda. The fourth item I will be moving to be an item for individual consideration. The three items are to approve the Select Board meeting minutes from February 12, approve town manager committee reappointments for the Commission on Disability and the Recreation Committee, and approve the Select Board Committee reappointment to the Historic District Commission. Are there any items members wish to consider individually? Seeing none, I move items one through three on the consent agenda as submitted in the agenda packet.
Second.
Moving to the second, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. It is unanimous, five-zero. And the fourth item, of course, was to remove, approve the request for quotations in proposed or proposal document which we will conduct as an item for debate. Our first item for individual consideration tonight is the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Ms. Axtell?
Thank you, Mr. Pato. One, a couple of things. One is I wanted to make sure the board was aware that Mr. Relaitis sent a message to town meeting that he will not be submitting his amendment this evening for Article 33. And then I also wanted to let you know the planning board took a vote on four-one for Article 48 and those two amendments, and they voted to support both of them with a preference for the Tom Schipel amendment. So if the board would like to discuss those amendments, they're not coming out today, but I put them back in the packet for discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Axtell. Mr. Sandin?
So I had a communication with Mr. Kaufman about, I'd asked him about Tom Schipel's amendment and whether he would consider it a friendly amendment, and he said he would consider it a friendly amendment and that it was okay for me to inform the Select Board of that.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. That is helpful. The colleagues, now that we've heard from the planning board, are you ready to weigh in on this amendment? I am. All right, it looks like we are in comments, Mr. Sandin?
I would support the amendment and Mr. Schipel's amendment.
Very good. I think we can treat this as being a single amendment, including both.
I support the amendment.
Very good.
Support.
Support.
As do I. So it's five-zero in support of the merged amendment. Just in case it doesn't merge, but just in case.
I would be in support of Mr. Schipel's amendment as well.
Yes, but if Mr. Kaufman brings just his amendment to the table without the change?
I would support it either way. It's the same.
Same. Yep.
So it's four to one. I actually think that ten is too tight, so I do support with Mr. Schipel's amendment. All right. Moving on to item number two, which is the update on Police Station Project. Mr. Sandin, sorry.
So I do, would like to change some items that may be on the town meeting tonight. So I'm wait, I have been listed as a wait on fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, and I will be a yes on fifty-two and a yes on fifty. And I would like to hear from staff whether they have, whether they have an answer for Mr. Daggett's question about Article 51. So I guess that would be a wait for town meeting.
So Mr. Sandin, you said you were a yes on fifty-two. I already had yours a yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Fifty, what's coming up tonight is fifty-one, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, right?
Yep.
So a yes on fifty, and I'm still a wait on fifty-one, but leaning yes. I just would like to hear town staff say what their answer is to Mr. Daggett's question.
Right, and we do have forty-eight. You and I are both weights on the underlying motion from the planning board. I am a yes. Oh, yes, yes, I'm a yes. So Ms. Lucenti, when you report out, you can report that the board is unanimously in favor of forty-eight.
We're not doing forty-eight tonight, correct?
We're not doing it tonight, that's right, that's why, okay.
But I will.
You can update, yes, thank you. Are there any other positions people would like to adjust?
Mr. Pato, I'm not a position this evening, but Ms. Axtell, if I submit some questions to you on forty-three, which is voting rights sixteen and older, could we ask Ms. Gill to ready to respond to them? Is that on the board?
Yes.
Oh. Ms. Lucenti?
Sorry, well, updating things, I am a yes on forty-seven. And I'm still going to remain a wait on forty. Sorry, I don't know who was presenting that time. I want to give a maybe.
Excuse me, I couldn't hear what you were saying, I apologize.
My apologies. I am going to be a yes on Article forty-seven and a wait on Article fifty, which I'm still awaiting now.
Mr. Pato, could I, did you say you're unanimous now on forty-eight? I believe that's.
Yes, unanimous on the underlying motion and on the amendment.
On the Schipel.
Yes.
You said you were not on the.
On the Schipel merged amendment.
Thank you.
All right.
And Mark, you said you were staying a wait on fifty-one.
Yes.
Making sure.
Yes.
And fifty, we're now four to one, four yes, one wait.
I'm gonna say you're not on my.
Sorry, I'm just making sure with the ones I have tonight, with the, we are on Article fifty, we are now four yeses and one wait, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That concludes town meeting. Until 7:30. All right, moving on to item number two, an update on the Police Station Project and the budget for the solar canopy. Mr. Cronin is here to present to us.
Good evening. So this is just a budget update on the police station and the solar canopy and battery project. If you remember, there's really two appropriations for the project. There's the second appropriation of $3.4 million for the solar canopy and all the components to it, and a $35,181,430 appropriation for the construction of the project itself. But about two years' worth of construction and efforts, and we're coming close to the very end and through lots of different change orders associated mainly with the electric work, with the integration of the solar and the canopy system, the solar canopy system and the battery power. We're very tight, and I'm not going to make any bones about that. We've had a lot of change orders and we've had, we're going to manage this right down to the last few dollars. On the, on the bottom of the page, you can see that the contingency shows a current balance of 1.775 million. And while that looks terrific, between now and the last, in the movement, we still have a number of hurdles to overcome. And we're anticipating having a surplus at the end of roughly $140,000, which doesn't leave us much room, but it looks as though it's very manageable to get there. There are some conservative components to that. As you can see on the slide in front of us, this is a list of all the change orders that we've had to date. So change orders in total, the contingency in total is about $2.8 million, and we've spent about $1,050,000 so far in change orders. We're anticipating a series of additional expenditures to happen between now and then. And if you go to the next page, please. Oh, I forgot these were in there. So some of these show, the first picture shows some of the groundwork that we owned in the project. And the second slide shows what actually happened, and there were significant changes. So as you can imagine, site conditions changed, the duct bank changed, the run for the EverSource power into the site changed. The runs back and forth to the tower changed into the battery position. In addition, we've relocated the transformer through conversations with the HDC. We relocated the two transformers and the battery from the corner of the park over to where the parking location stalls are. So that whole component happened. So there's a significant amount of underground work and electrical work that we wanted, having some change orders for. That next slide. This area here is really where you see some of the expenditures on the remainder of the contingency will be spent. In the yellow section, there are some, there are some construction components that are out there. Change order eleven, we already know that's out, that's already in our hands and has to be paid. There are some pending change orders that are out there, we've also identified those. We've negotiated back and forth specifically with the electrical contractor that we have on site, and there's about $526,000 for that. We're putting aside some general condition, conditions and general requirements for the contractor, the CTA. We're putting that aside at roughly $200,000, anticipating some changes to the end date of the project. If we are to build the steel canopy, we're going to wind up moving the last day. They're going to continue to keep staff on site, they're going to continue to have some level of supervision over the project. We don't, we only own them to a certain date. If we go beyond that date, we're going to have to pay them to be there to help us manage the project. That said, we're going to put aside about $200,000 for that. So there's another budget here, $400,000. We call those unknowns. When we start to put the steel in place, when we start to do some of the underground work, I'm sorry, the Fletcher Field work, we're thinking there's going to be some stuff there. We want to have a little bit of an earmark, that's the reason for the contingency, we're putting that aside just in case. And then the closeout cost, there's always stuff that happens at the very end as we're trying to get the police into, in the door and the contractor out the door. We'll have to do some final negotiations of some things that we thought we're going to have. We thought we had it right. Sometimes the police station will move in and say, well, that's really not exactly the way we want it, so we'll do some last-minute changes to have some, some things adjusted. So we will also carry that last $100,000. Tecton adds services for their contract administration for the steel erection. We've budgeted, we've negotiated about $25,000 worth of fee there. And then there's some FFNE items that we purposely did not carry in the FFNE contract that we're purchasing. We've known about these fees all along, we knew we were going to wait to the very end to purchase them. Things like miscellaneous shelving, the vehicle lift. We all have known all along we're putting vehicle lifts in, but we didn't want the contractor to pay for that. We're paying for that out of our pocket, out of the budget, and so these expenditures are all here, and that's about another $200,000. And then the last category is some of the potential fees that we're going to run up against. OPM is the same as the, as the CTA. We need, not only do we want their staff watching it, but we want some of our own folks watching the store just to make sure that the steel goes up the right way. This is a very intricate steel system, and we want to make sure that we have somebody watching that the whole way through. Envelope commissioning, cooler energy, materials testing, those things we do at the end of every project. These are standard fees that we're following through, the same way we test out every building. There's, there are fees that we've known about from the very beginning. Miscellaneous expenses, again, we're conservative here. I want to make that clear, we're conservative, we want to just make sure we have a little part just in case. And then, of course, to move the staff from 173 up is about $25,000. That leaves me a balance of about $145,000 unspoken for at this point. Close. I don't want to make any misstatements there, we're close. The next budget is the, to talk a little bit about the $3.4 million solar canopy and battery system. The good news is that some of the site work is already done and some of the foundation work is all complete. So the in-the-ground work is done. That's the good, that's the good news. We still have some surface work to do, we still have sidewalks to put in. And as you remember, we have a fairly sizable canopy, so our sidewalk underneath that is also fairly sizable. It's about 22 feet wide, and there's a lot of footage for it. So there's about $85,000 associated with that. The steel itself, we've had the contractor, CTA's steel vendor, give us a proposal for that, and it's come in at roughly a little over $2 million, 2.1 million. That does not include CTA's fee to actually be there, that's just the steel and the erection. The canopy lighting, so underneath all of the canopies, we need to have a certain level of foot candles. And so that is a line item for about $55,000. Architects and construction testing, every single weld will wind up being tested. So we will have a significant amount of weld work that will need to happen on this project, and so a serious, a significant amount of weld testing will also happen. We're carrying a precise number there. The last couple of items, the solar panels and the battery. So the solar panels is really broken into two systems. Kim, can you pull the next two slides up for me, please? So this one is the rooftop system, it's about a 42-kilowatt DC system. And so that system is a little different. So they're a different panel with a different base, and we've priced that out at about $164,000. And Kim, the next one? And the main canopy system is this, this L shape. As you can tell, the mass av leg is down low and the big canopy is up front, and this is about 297 KW DC. Those, we're purchasing just panels, they're 590-watt bifacial panels, and they have, this system is being designed to put that panel on top of it. Through many conversations with folks, we've determined that the price that we're receiving from the supplier that we're looking at is, is a little on the high side. It's significantly on the high side. And so between the solar panels on both projects, we think that the price is high, which as a result is putting us over budget. In addition, the battery, which has also been priced out at a fairly heavy $889,000, the battery's not the battery that we really want. It's a, it's a 250-watt two-hour battery, and we really want a 250-hour minimum, three-hour battery, if not preferably a four. And so that price is exceptionally high, that came in much, much higher than we anticipated through all the conversations we had with folks. And that, again, puts us over budget. So we, we really have three options in front of us. Option one is to take the system as it currently exists, which is the footings in the ground, have CTA finish Fletcher Field and do that work, get off-site. We'll put an RFP out, bring another contractor in to purchase the steel, erect it, purchase solar panels, and install them. That is one option. Option two is let CTA finish the steel work. They've gone through all of the shop drawings, they've gone through all the work with the steel vendor at this point. Have them do the steel work, let them finish the work on Fletcher, all the flat work that goes with it, and have them go away, and we'll have a procurement process for solar panels and batteries, which seem to kind of make, you know, they kind of make more sense, they group together more naturally. And third project is, the third option is to go forward with the whole job and, and find some additional funds to supplement the project. My preference, if I, if I could throw a preference in, would be to continue with the steel work at this point. Have CTA finish that piece of the project and let them walk away with a structure that's ready to go. We can utilize the field, we can utilize the parking underneath, and then when we put RFP out, we'll put the solar panels on and integrate the battery. I know that's a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. It's a lot and it's disappointing, but understandable. So what risks do we run if we stop at the steel and, and go out for new bids for the rest, the batteries and the panels and such?
I'm not sure there's much of a risk as much as there is opportunity. I, I think we've looked at the market and we're seeing a pretty high price right now, we're paying a premium, and we think that going in a different path will allow us to have better pricing, not worse pricing. I can't, I don't anticipate seeing worse pricing. In fact, the industry, specifically in the battery industry, is seeing a reduction in costs as time goes down the line here. There seems to be a little bit of a bubble of supply, but that price has not been reflected in what we've seen so far. So with a little bit of a delay, it might make more sense, we'll see much better prices specifically in the battery area.
Is delaying generating any risk with regard to connection with EverSource?
Not at this point, it's not, there's no, they haven't indicated that any delay of time would have any impact.
That's helpful, thank you. Colleagues, other questions or comments? It's Joe Lucenti.
So I have one technical question and then one practical question. My technical question first is, there's a note here that says battery two hour quoted, four hours, 1.2 million, correct? Can you just explain what, what is the difference? I know it's two hours is the difference, but what is that in layman's terms, the difference between those two options and, correct? How would that practically affect the project or the building or?
So my knowledge is not as extensive as Mr. Sandin's, however. You want to take a crack at it, Mr. Sandin?
Sure. So one of the major sources of revenue for the battery is a program that EverSource has called Connected Solutions, and Connected Solutions wants you to discharge the battery for three hours. So if you have a two-hour battery, you're only going to get two-thirds of the revenue from EverSource. If you have a three-hour battery, now you're going to get 100% of the Connected Solutions revenue. If you have a four-hour battery, you get additional savings from the building or peak demand savings, and you get additional resilience for the building in the event that the power goes out. So you start to have significantly higher return on investment for the larger battery than the smaller battery.
In all the modeling we've done, we, we were hoping for a four-hour battery to be incorporated out of the scope of the work.
And just to expand slightly, it's, by preference, batteries don't want to go to zero, right? So a three-hour battery would actually exhaust it completely, so you're either not doing the full three hours or you're stressing the batteries.
Correct.
So it is, that's why a four-hour battery is the target.
Right.
And, and another reason for a four-hour battery is they have dramatically longer lifespan because for the reasons Mr. Pato was suggesting, you're not stressing every cell every day. So you get, instead of a 15-year battery, you get a 20- or 25-year battery by, by going with the larger cells.
So my practical question is if we go out, if we take a different direction, we take a pause on the panels, but do all the steel work, and we go out and we find that there is no better pricing. This is, this is what it is, how are we paying for this? And I'll add to my question. You know, there's some double, what I feel like are double contingencies in here, and I don't know if that's on purpose, I mean, I guess, I know you're being very conservative, but I guess I'm a little confused at why we're putting, you know, this $400,000 budget. I think that's for the station, but you said a lot of that was the connectivity. I'm just trying to understand where, where do we draw the line on too much fluff is too much, you know, versus we, you know, could the numbers all really work here?
I'm happy to talk about the project piece of it first. So you're right, we're conservative, we, we really don't come back to the Select Board and ask for more money for projects. That's really something we don't do. And part of that is Mark's conservative budgeting approach, and I appreciate that a lot. I think we've, we've really run, done well by that practice. In this instance, he and I have had quite a few conversations about the conservative budgeting nature and then the needs of the project at the same time, and I'm fighting, you know, sometimes we're a little bit at odds. I'm trying to have him be more aggressive, and there's a little conservativeness, sorry, Mark Barrett for my office.
Okay, I was thinking, is this Mark? I apologize.
So Mark is the project manager on all of the larger construction projects and does a terrific job, and there's some conservativeness here. We've, we continue to try to make that small and smaller, and every month as we get further and further through, closer to 621, when our move-in date, that number will continue to get smaller. And then that funds will be able to be moved into the solar panel battery purchase component of it. So I think that, that deficit will get a little smaller, I do not think it will go to zero.
Thank you for this, and thanks for the heads up. I know this is not a conversation you want to come in and have, so.
In addition, I believe this next round of ARPA funds, I've submitted a request for the funding of the battery specifically in that next round, it's a significant ask, it's $889,000. But to be clear, as we get closer on the police department budget side, that'll leave some component ask for, for an ARPA request, so I've hit that as well.
Ms. Barry?
No, I'm sorry, just to address the other financing aspects of it. As Mr. Cronin said, he has made an ARPA request. There's also the flexibility by delaying the solar and battery component that will know where we're at as far as contingency goes on the project, because then the project will be completed and we won't have to be holding that contingency any longer. We've also submitted, or will be submitting, probably today's Wednesday, by Friday of this week, we'll be submitting applications to Senator Warren and Markey as well as Representative Clark for Congress, what's called congressionally directed spending. It's funds that Congress has already appropriated in different categories, and members of Congress have the ability to earmark those funds for certain projects within their districts. We have an ask, and I have to tell you that in all my years, I've never asked for that kind of funding, but we're going through that process right now. Mr. Pato gave us a letter earlier today, we have to have some local letters of support, so we have one from Mr. Pato as well as Senators Barrett and Friedman and Representatives Saccolo and Gordon. We have letters from all of them already in hand. The applications are pretty much completed at this point in time. Mike and Carolyn and I have been going back and forth with those. And so we intend, the deadline is this Friday for the Senate side and Monday for the House side. We intend to have them all in by this Friday. We're asking for the entire amount, the 4.6 million, but also have identified that the minimum that would allow us to go forward with this project would be about $1.5 million. And so we're also seeking outside funding in that manner. It's a good project for them as congressmen because they get to contribute a little bit to a project and, and then still indicate that they play a role in allowing us to get our police stations net zero. So it's a, I think, a pretty good application. And so if we don't get that and the board doesn't approve ARPA and then put it back out to bid, and even after the police station is done. put it back out to bid, and even after the police station is done, if we still don't have sufficient funds, then we will need to go back to town meeting in the fall to ask for additional debt authorization. This is, the current project is a debt authorization, so we would have to, you know, time the, the RFP at that point so that we would have a set price. We go back to town meeting and say we need X dollars to finalize the project. So that would be our last resort. So those are the funding mechanisms that we have for a project like this, where we see it going over what the original appropriation was.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy, Ms. Barry.
Thank you. So are the finance committees aware of this situation? Appropriation or capital?
No.
Okay, so horses out of the barn, I think it's time they get looped in on this one too, so it's not a surprise. As we figure out how to move forward. So Ms. Katzenback, could you go to slide seven, please? So being somewhat visual, the column that's up there, would you say that is, you gave us three options, would you say that was option three? Assuming that the, you know, take out the budget shortfall part at the bottom, that's if we're going forward, that's where we would be, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then if we're at option two, which I think you said was let CTA finish the steel and Fletcher, and we would do something else to procure the solar and the battery, what comes off the list?
The eight eighty nine, the seven fifty two, and the hundred and sixty four.
Right.
So about one point eight.
What was the third number? Thank you.
So the eight eighty nine represents the battery, the seven fifty two represents the five hundred ninety watt panels that are over the canopy at Fletcher, and the hundred and sixty four is the ballasted solar system that's on the roof.
Okay, and then if we were at option one, where are we? I think that was, we just leave the footings, they do Fletcher Field, and then a second contractor for the steel.
Yeah, so most of the whole top.
Does that start with two million all the way down?
Two million, the lighting wouldn't happen, we would do the sidewalks, because I think we own that. And then the GCGRs and the rest of it.
So for those of us who are visual, it might be worth doing a slide that talks to what it would be with your three options, since you're talking publicly about three options. And this doesn't, I'm a little bit confused here, so would the solar go on the roof of the police station, or that would also be on pause?
I'd put that on pause.
Is it possible to put that on, or would that not be the right thing to do?
It, it's possible to put it on, I don't think that I would do that without having the canopy at the same time.
And why would that be? I'm not a solar person, so.
Their time with the batteries, is that what the issue is?
There, it, there's, there's significant issues with doing an interconnection service agreement and then doing a second interconnection service agreement on the same site. You may remember when we did this for the, the last round, we ended up having to petition, we had to write, the select board had to write a petition to the DPU, and we waited nine months for the DPU to approve doing a second interconnection on the same site.
Okay, so another question on your FAQs, because I'm just going to say, if I've got this question, I'm sure there are other people out there that are going to have a question like this, and especially if we get to the town meeting room. So what would the request be for ARPA? One point five, we don't have one point five in ARPA.
He, he made a he made a request for eight eighty nine.
We should basically clear out the ARPA account.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have right now, thank you.
Ms. Hayes and then Mr. Sandin.
Thank you, so I guess, so Ms. Barry definitely asked the start of my questions, so I'll skip forward. I guess, as a pragmatic matter, the reason to delay is because you said you think we could get better pricing, particularly on the batteries and on the panels themselves. So I guess I have two questions. The first is, by what kind of margin are we talking about? I mean, you, you sort of priced that out for us at about one point eight that we're talking about delaying. Are we talking about, you know, the likelihood of bringing it to one point seven, or are we talking about bringing it to one? Or somewhere in between, what is the reasonable expectation, given that you mentioned you've sort of looked at what else is out in the field and why you have a belief that this is overpriced?
Well, some of this is forecasting, and so anticipating, right now, the battery prices are not favorable, specifically for municipalities. In the commercial world, they're much, much cheaper, and so we're waiting for that supply to hit the municipal ranks where our numbers will then cut. We, we think the batteries are fifty percent, minimum fifty percent of a price. Solar panels, there's conversations that are happening that, that are, we're five or six times overpaying for the price per watt for panels. And so those numbers are fairly significant. And based on that newer information, I'm coming back and saying I think we should pause those two aspects of the project.
Okay, thank you, that is helpful, that's what I was trying to get that gauge. But I guess the question then is, how long a pause are you thinking? Is this a, you mentioned, you know, we didn't have to come back to fall town meeting. Do you think this correction in the market is going to happen over the summer, or are we talking we could wait a year or two?
My hope would be to, by the end of the summer, to put it back out on the street and really get a sense of what's out there at that point in time. If it fits under the budget, we'll make a recommendation to proceed with that. If it doesn't fit under the budget, I think we should talk again at the end of the fall and determine whether we go to town meeting or continue to put it on pause.
Okay, thank you, and, and I know in past years, we've talked about there being sort of a prime window for putting contracts out, and the end of the summer is not it. So I'm wondering whether that plays into this. Are we likely to just get the people who filled up their calendar and are just looking to take those last couple of spots, so the prices really aren't going to be that favorable at that point? Or do you think because of this particular product, it's still favorable to go out at that time of the year?
I think my general comment on that is from a construction standpoint, it's less favorable in that window where we're, we're digging in the ground and we're doing work in the wintertime. In this case, none of that happens. Everything's above ground, everything's available to us twenty, twelve months a year. They can do this work in the winter. I'm, I'm less worried about having that impact from a construction standpoint than it would be if we were doing a foundation. The good news is all that would be done.
Right, no, and I appreciate that, I guess I was talking not so much about the, the actual work timing, but about the, the availability of the contractors, that, you know, it used to sort of be, at least when I was a little more in this, that you wanted to get, you know, the contractors to bid in the winter as they were lining up, or the late falls, they were lining up their coming year. The people who were bidding on projects in the late summer were the ones who either for various quality reasons, potentially weren't full or, you know, were just going to charge much higher pricing because they knew you were kind of late in the game and desperate for the time for their work.
Remember, this kind of work is, is a short, short duration work job. So this isn't something that they're going to book for the next nine months out. This is three, four weeks worth of work to get up there with some lifts and, and I might be generous saying three or four weeks. So it's, so it's really not that same kind of a construction component, it's more of an installation as opposed to a construction project.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And I think the last question I had was just, is we, you had also mentioned that you thought the steel itself was extremely expensive. And so that wasn't in one of your options, delaying the steel, have we already bought that at that very high price?
We have not purchased it yet, however, because this is a fully welded system, there is a window where it's the most desirable to actually do the welding. And frankly, that's spring, summer, and early fall. Anything outside of those windows, the temperatures are too low, the deltas are too high, so that when they're doing the welding, the, the steel has more problems. So from a, from a materials standpoint, it makes most sense to do the steel now.
I could also add, by doing the steel now, it gives us the opportunity to restore Fletcher Park. Whereas we don't do the steel now, we won't be able to do that until next year.
Thank you both.
Mr. Sandin.
So if I can follow up on Ms. Hayes' question, I seem to remember you presenting to the select board previously, or maybe it was PBC, I'm not a hundred percent sure now, that you had received other bids on steel that were substantially higher than this. And so that if we sort of delayed on steel, we might end up having significantly higher costs coming down the pike, am I remembering that correct?
You, you do remember the numbers correctly, I believe it was PBC. And it, the, the number, the other number we saw that came in was a little over two point eight million for the same steel package. There was one outlier that was well over three million dollars for the steel. We, we threw that one out right away, but the, the second con- conversation that we had was with the gentleman that actually did the steel work for the building, and they came in much, much higher.
Right. So, so given that, it seems to me like there's a chance that if we delayed the steel, we would come in even higher. And, and maybe not just a chance, but a high likelihood is what I'm, was what I'm hearing.
That's, that's my understanding as well.
Correct, okay. So another follow up to Ms. Hayes' question on, you know, the, the question about will a pause get us lower prices on solar and, and batteries? So I, I would just like to ask, it's not just a pause that you're considering, but also a change in procurement strategy, is that correct?
So at this point, what we're using is the onsite GC to go through and do more of a change order process with them. Going out and having a competitive RFP gives the opportunity for many suppliers to, to provide us with the service that we're looking for as opposed to having one pathway. I, I don't want to say the CTA has this overbarrel, they really don't, but right now they're the one source of information. And it might not be the cheapest source of information. And so I think it makes sense to see what's out there in the market to do this level of installation.
So given, so given those comments, from my perspective, if I'm listening to the town manager and Mr. Cronin correctly, my preference would be that we continue forward with putting the steel up so that we can button up the site so that we can have a completed structure that the rest of the town would see as complete. While we wait to do our competitive procurement and lower the cost of our, our solar and battery and get the size battery that we're hoping, as opposed to sort of compromising on the size of the battery. And for those reasons, I guess your option B sounds like the one for me.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin, I was just about to ask, Mr. Cronin, when do you need guidance for an decision? I, I'm ready to give feedback also, but.
I prefer to have the guidance this evening, partially because we want to give the contract of the direction on the steel. The longer we wait, the more expensive the vendor's going to be.
Okay, Mr. Lucente, and then Ms. Barry after.
Ms. Barry can go first, because I think she has a question.
More information. So my favorite question, timeline. So if we move forward with B or option two, and the steel goes up, with your crystal ball, how long is that structure going to be there with no solar on it? And we, as the elected officials, are going to be hearing about it, just as we've been hearing about the size of that building. Which the size of that building has always been the size of that building, but once it gets built, it looks big.
So I would anticipate having the steel completed by late summer, early fall. At the same time, put the RFP out for the solar, solar canopy procurement and the battery procurement. And then we'll have a timeline. Those seem to be more off the shelf. Those seem to be more available to purchase, they're sitting in warehouses waiting for people to actually purchase them. But the other, really, is the steel at this point that I'm most nervous about. I'm, I'm less worried about that. The timeline for those, once they show up, I think we can have them installed in a month or so. Still for end of fall, early winter as a final installation.
And so then, going back to timeline, how does this all affect the parking out there? And police being able to move in and the circulation pattern and town hall parking and carry hall parking and all that, does this affect any of that at all?
If we do the steel now, it wouldn't, if we wait for the steel until the fall, it will then.
Meaning what?
Park underneath places where we have a crane and putting steel up, so we'd have everybody displaced from that section under the canopy. We do allow them to park on the mass app section, when the mass app section was being built, we'd have them move over to underneath the other side. This will allow us to have as much work done before they move in as possible.
What's their anticipated move in date? Oh, okay, I thought at one point we were talking like April, May.
No, no, it's always been six twenty one.
Okay.
That's when nine one one moves.
Yeah, so we, we are referring to a substantial completion, you're correct about that, the move in date has always been June twenty first.
Okay, so then if we put up a steel, there's no solar, there's no batteries, we go to RFP, we go through that process, we don't find someone, then we're going to town meeting, is that what we're thinking? Is this a special town meeting, or is this just it's the regular fall town?
I, I would think that, you know, assuming we don't get the federal funding either, then it would be probably just the regular fall town meeting, and it probably, then the work wouldn't happen till over the winter at some point in time. Because they can do that work year round, and so it would be after the town meeting at that point.
Okay.
Mr. Lucente. So I, I thank you, Ms. Barry, for the question on the police operations. It sounds like it would be minimal if it's just panels, is that what I heard?
Correct.
Okay, and then I think as we go forward in this discussion, I think it's important that we provide town meeting and other folks information about what the return on investment is for the battery storage and the credits and all that stuff. Because that, to be frank, I don't remember though, I remember the concept, I don't remember the numbers and what, you know, I think it's important, these are such big numbers for people to get the full picture, because it right now seems like astronomical that we'd spend four point six million dollars for solar canopy that's all, you know, generating. I mean, it's a decent amount of kilowatts, but not, not as much as you expect for four point six nine. So I think the ROI is important that we present that. Second, or third, I think, you know, the, the ARPA versus town meeting, I feel pretty strongly that the, this is not a good use of ARPA, and the, the reason is we as a community went to town meeting and we went to the voters, we said we need a new police station. This is important, we discussed and debated the solar canopies at town meeting. It seems like a backdoor fix the problem, what's an extra money we found? That is, that is not, doesn't feel right to me, regardless of the availability of the funds. It's just, this was a public project, a very deep amount of public debate, and I think we need to continue down that path. The grant money, I will say, fine, still think we need to report out, you know, what we, what we did. And I would echo the concept of, you know, getting the finance committee's feedback on this before we go too far. There, there are partners in a lot of this decision making, and we need to, we need to get them, we need to all be on the same page, like this would be a great budget summit topic, to be quite honest, because it's, the numbers are so, so big. Thank you.
So thank you, Mr. Lucente. We, we need to move to the next topic, but for me, this is, the, the, the cost that the design has imposed on us has been always troubling to me, and seeing the actual numbers for the steel are mind boggling. That said, you know, I think we have a choice in front of us of either proceeding or not in the ROI while we want to see the numbers. It is still a return on investment over a, a reasonable amount of years, not decades. And I think we do need to proceed. So I, I want us to be able to come back and give direction soon. I will say that for me, grudgingly, I would, I would adopt your preferred path of installing the steel because otherwise we would be delaying to the point of incurring more impact on operations for the police and for, for the general public, and we'd be pushing ourselves into next year for a lot of this, which I don't think we want to do. So I would be ready to say, proceed with option two. I don't know if my colleagues are, I think Mr. Sandy has expressed his willingness.
So I, I'm, I'm really not ready to commit tonight, this is kind of a lot to digest, and I I, I'm just kind of struck that at least the chairs of the finance committees are kind of in the loop on this, that one, and again, to Mr. Lucente's point about town meeting, I, I agree, this is not a use of ARPA funding for this.
I'll agree with you on that.
Thank you.
All right.
So, so I was going to say, I, I, I agree that we should have a, a meeting, that we should include the finance committees for a conversation about this. I am leaning towards the middle road, or the middle option, it's not the middle road. But because I, I am particularly interested in seeing if we can get the, not just a lower price, but a better product that we wanted. I also have some hesitation about looking at the the structural steel for some amount of time, like a year with nothing on it. And I think Ms. Barry raises a fair point that we're going to hear a lot about that. So I'm inclined that way, but I think I would like this to come back to us in, in the relative short term after you could have perhaps a conversation with the, the finance committees.
Do I just have one thing?
Ms. Barry, and then we'll close it up.
Yeah, Barry, and then we'll close it out.
Just one more thing to think about. If we go with number two, we have structural steel sitting there without solar on it. Depending how quickly that happens, it's going to be within the window of trying to get the high school done. So I mean, it's, again, it's political for us, and it's political for the other elected officials, but it's political, and it's something that we can't not think about.
And just to be clear, we're saying structural steel, but the steel is what that whole design was.
Correct.
So it's not, it's not I means.
So literally, but you 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 won't see the solar panels, remember? We're talking these very low profile solar panels. I know folks may not know that they're not on there, but it's not going to be this big gaping hole with a bunch of.
I know, I understand that. I understand that. But when the community finds out that a three point four million dollar project has blossomed to a four point six million dollar project, and it's not complete with the solar on it, and we're trying to get a five hundred or six hundred million dollar project through town, through town meeting and through debt exclusion vote. It speaks to our ability as elected officials and our responsibility to navigate things and to bring the best project forward to the community and to get their support. So it's it's really the relationship between us and our residents who vote. And that's complicated relationship for us at sometimes. And we really are going to need everybody in town plus hundred and one percent, hundred and ten percent to get the high school to finish line. So, you know, it's the elephant that's in the room with us on almost everything we do moving forward, and we just can't forget about that.
Right. And having that ROI will be very helpful to demonstrate here is what it will generate. I want to bring this to an end because we do need to have a few minutes on the other top. So I will not take comment tonight on this.
You can one other tough.
Yeah, no, no, no. Right. So we're we're now moving to the fourth item from the consent agenda, which was to look at the RFQ, RFP document regarding the executive search for consultants for the town manager. Ms. Hay will lead us through this. We have the the draft edited RFQ in front of us, and with luck, we will vote it tonight.
Yeah. So I took in everything that was either submitted or I hope everything that was said last conversation about this. Mr. Malloy updated some of the, you know, the data points on the, about the town. I have played with the dates a little bit, and that was really where I wanted everybody to talk. When we originally, or when I originally put this together, I was looking at an April tenth date for issuance. It appears now that we should be able to issue this by Friday. If I get lucky, yeah, it'll be Friday. Because I want Ms. Mancini to look at it again before it goes out as well. I want to make sure I'm not doing anything out of. She looked at it early on, but now that we've filled with enough enough things, I think she needs to take a look at it. So what would, and I also want her advice about how long we need to keep it out. So the expectation right now, sort of mirroring what we did six years ago, is that if it goes out on Friday, it's out for just under two weeks because of where things fall with both Patriots Day and Passover and our meeting schedule. I'm proposing that it come back, that the deadline for return be Thursday, I believe it's the eighteenth, which is the Thursday in the middle of the holiday week. But that then gives us a full, or almost a full week to review. And we don't have a meeting on Monday, the twenty second. We do have a meeting on the twenty fourth. We would, on the twenty fourth, have a discussion, having looked at whatever is submitted for five days. And we would need to vote that night who we were inviting to interview. The interviews would be in person on the twenty ninth. And we would be expecting to make a decision the same day. Now, whether we meet twice on the twenty ninth and we do this in the morning and vote it in the evening, or whether we vote it right at the end, I'm not opining at the moment. But that would have us able to hire, essentially make an offer on the twenty ninth. And Mr. Lucetti, to your point when we discussed this last time, it then gives a weak cushion between, you know, entering into a contract and having the meetings start. And then the other thing I did with the dates was just to say, for all the groups that we're going to want to have the consultant meet, it's going to happen within this window, but I didn't put a specific date for any particular group. That can be done. We don't need to micromanage A, and B, different people will have different availability, and they can work that out. So that's sort of the process as far as the consultant goes. The other piece that needs to play into this, however, is that we need to have a screening committee in place no later than the twenty ninth. And in a perfect world, we vote the members of the committee on the twenty ninth as well. Which means, since we don't have it on tonight's agenda, we need to vote the charge at our next meeting. We need to then sort of have the the outreach queued up. And Mr. Malloy, I don't know if you would be willing to take that on with Mr. Miller, to have him ready to, if we vote it Monday night, to start pushing the information out on Tuesday to solicit applicants for the committee. We then need to get it back in short order. And I do understand that it's school vacation week because we then need to rank those candidates and vote them on the twenty ninth. And Ms. Prizio has to have enough time to compile our votes. So I I don't have all of those right here, but it's going to be a short turnaround.
Right. So just to flesh that out a little bit, I have spoken with staff. If we issue the public announcement on the ninth, having voted it on the eighth in the evening, we would have those packages back in on the eighteenth. So the applications would be due on the eighteenth. Staff would put together the information for us so that we would have the weekend to look over the resumes and vote the membership on the twenty second.
We don't have a meeting on the twenty second. So we, it it essentially puts it at the same timeline as the consultant firms. Everything will be due, both applications and RFP returns, RFQ returns come in on the eighteen. And we are, you know, reviewing them all and taking votes on the, well, we could potentially vote on the twenty nine. We could push it to the twenty ninth so that they, we have a little longer because a lot of people may be away. But we can work that out. Yes.
Ms. Hay.
We look so much alike. It's easy.
Yeah, we do. So a couple of things. First, if we stick with this schedule, you're asking us to be available on Monday, the twenty ninth in the morning? And do we know for how long? Because that's a new, potentially a new meeting for all of us. So I don't know if you've checked everyone's schedule.
I have not. We had the sixth in before, and we did talk about trying to move it up a week. So it will depend, and that's a question we're going to have. I don't know how many applications we're going to receive. I believe last time we did talk to, we had three, and we talked to all three of them. So that would be about a three hour meeting.
At least. So, and we did want to do that in person. I appreciate, I appreciate the kind of aggressiveness we have in this schedule. But I still wonder if we can loosen it a little bit, a smidgen. Because when it comes to the the screening committee, I know typically we just rank, we look at the paperwork and we rank. I would like to have a conversation potentially with some of these people and to understand, especially the community members, why they're interested in serving more than we're going to get on a piece of paper. Because they're going to be going through the bulk of the screening and the processing and bringing us just three people. And I think they need to hear potentially from all of us of, you know, or we need to hear from them, and we're not going to have time to do two, two and ones.
So I think when we've picked a committee, we absolutely should be engaging with them on what we're looking for. You you are completely justified in wanting to speak to applicants. If we want, this was the schedule, assuming we were not interviewing. If you want to interview, we have to have probably at least a week on.
Right. Again, again, I will say, I think we're in a different situation than we were six years ago. Six years ago, we were in a situation where the then town manager was retiring, and we didn't have a deep bench. So we were looking to do a relatively quick turnaround. I think we have a deeper bench this time, and I think if we went into a month or two of an acting town manager, I don't think that would be the end of the world. And we haven't even had that conversation as a board.
So if I could, while I agree, we have a much deeper, more experienced bench than we did six years ago. I do also think we need to think about what happens in the fall and what it leads into and what that timing is. You know, an ideal transition is not going to be December of twenty four, let's say. So I I think, that is not to say that I don't think we can pick up a week. I think we probably can pick up a week if that's what the board would like. And my only question is, do you want me to move everything out a week? Because I, our, would we have, still try to do the screening committee on, I'm sorry, the consultant on this timeframe and their initial conversations could simply be happening before they met with the screening committee. They could be doing the meetings with us. They could be working on the profile. They could be talking to staff. They could be talking to committees, different things.
So Ms. Hay, I would, I would recommend that. And I think we can afford to spend more time on on selecting members of the screening committee. But I don't want to slow down getting a consultant on board.
Okay, then what I will suggest in the interest of time is that tonight's agenda item is the consultant contract. We have the screening committee conversation on Monday, and we can talk about that schedule. So as long as we're not saying that they're inexorably tied, then I think we can go ahead and vote this largely as it is. I'm going to ask that we vote it subject to any necessary, you know, non substantive changes and or any factual changes if somebody notices that there's some update that I didn't catch in content.
And you said procurement.
And I was gonna, and I'm getting there. You got ahead of me. My three things, scriveners, any factual errors, and the procurement office. So, subject to the, to those three conditions, if we're comfortable roughly with these dates, that would be great. And I will, I know there's a lot of different places where the dates show up. We will change them all. They, it's sort of not all in here because we didn't know what this was going to end up being.
So colleagues, the motion that is, I hear already gave that latitude. Ms. Barry, question?
So we vote this, it goes out tomorrow, tomorrow?
Friday.
Friday. To how many people? Because it's an RFQ.
That's the question I have for Ms. Mancini. So I am aware of sort of three main players in this field in Massachusetts. There are others who are out of state. There, you know, I have done a lot of asking about who else might be appropriate around here. I haven't got, I I keep getting the same three names. There are others out of state. Do we want to go to an out of state player or not?
I would need to have a compelling reason.
And the other piece, and this was the piece that I I want to ask Ms. Mancini, which I just don't know, since this is an RFQ, not an RFP. I know that we don't have to post it. Maybe Mr. Malloy, you know the answer to this, but we don't have to post it anywhere. But does it still, is it still publicly put somewhere? We may in fact find that we get non solicited responses. I actually read, just because I've been a little immersed in this, there was a town on the Cape that had sent it to two people, expected to only get to, ended up getting a third. And in fact, it came in lower. It was somebody they never heard of, and they were very concerned. And there's a whole article in the Cape Cod Times you can read. But so that's my answer. I don't know whether we have to put it out someplace publicly that we may get other bids as well.
So just to follow up about companies from out of state, there was a company that bid last time. That's a national company that's located in the Midwest-ish.
I think Go HR.
Go HR, yeah, but they have like local people. So I don't know how we're defining out of state. Because most places have representatives within states.
In fact, I think the people we used last time were technically based in New Hampshire. So out of New England, I should have said.
Mr. Sandy.
Can I ask, I'm not sure who I'm asking, the town manager or Ms. Hay. So if we go out and we get a bunch of bids back, are we doing an RFQ where we're evaluating qualifications first? Or we require to take the lowest bidder? Mr. Malloy.
You would, I'm sorry, you would be looking at their qualifications and then negotiating a price.
But I think we only, we have to evaluate just against what we've listed in here. So that's why it's so important that everything that's really critical to us is in here. Because if they meet all of these qualifications and they have the lowest price, that's who you have to take. And by the way, that's the case on the Cape.
Mr. Lucetti.
Ready to vote? And thank you, Ms. Hay.
No last, very good. So I move to approve the request for quotation with any edits deemed necessary and to authorize the town manager to release the request for quotation for an executive search consultant for town manager search.
Second.
We can second it all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose, say nay. None, it is five zero unanimous. Thank you. And colleagues, it is after seven, so.
Mr. Panda, do you want to address item number three, since it's still on the agenda?
Oh, right. Number three is on the agenda, was to discuss the the Black Stupithia invitations. At our meeting on Monday, the board chose to replace the motion for this article with an indefinite postponement and to defer the discussion of invitations to a later date after town meeting. So we will not be discussing this tonight. Colleagues, I had deferred any board member comments and announcements. Is there anything urgent or can it wait for Monday? And if so, can you put it in writing? Seeing that you can, we will move to an adjournment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is, we are adjourned.